Sorry, before we do that, can we just note for the record that Robert Trudgen and Lucy Mulvey aren't here?
We have to turn it on, sorry.
Sorry, before-
Can you hear me now?
Sorry.
Conditional use permit for short-term rental-
Hold on just a second. We actually need you to either vote on the consent item or maybe hold it till later if Lucy's coming later in the meeting. Huh? I know, but two zero doesn't pass the motion.
You don't have to be at a meeting to approve the minutes if you, yeah.
We just had a vote to-
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Which is the minutes?
Yep.
Do we have a second? Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to abstain again?
I'll abstain again. I know I can vote on it, I don't feel comfortable doing it because I wasn't there, so. Uh, conditional, conditional use permit, uh, a public hearing on conditional use permit for a short-term rental, 23 Main Street. Uh, you gonna kick this off, Erin?
I am, yes, thank you. So, um, in front of you tonight is a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 23 Main Street, like the chair just said. The applicant, um, I'm sorry, the house is located in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. It is within the Main Street Historic District and our Historic District. They are applying to rent out a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house. The code requires one parking space per bedroom, and they are saying that the parking spaces are the garage and the on, and then driveway, so that all three cars allowed with the rentals can be contained within the property. So, as this, I say this every time we have this, this topic come up, the short-term rental. So, the council a few years back had asked us to track and come back to them when we had hit twenty. We went back last fall to talk to the council about what we've been seeing in terms of trends on short-term rentals. We are at twenty-one with two applications on the agenda tonight. So, when we went and spoke to the council in March, or I'm sorry, fall of last year, and when we were about at that twenty mark, they did not see it as an issue to make any immediate changes then. They wanted us to continue to keep an eye on it, add some additional permit requirements like the insurance. Um, and then we are actually going back next month to do another recap to the city council about short-term rentals, what we're seeing, if there's a certain amount of concentration in one part of the city or other, um, which ones have stopped being rented. I know, for example, two that we've approved in the last couple of years, those houses are for sale right now. So, they're, they could be dropping off of our list. So, we'll be providing that information to the plan, uh, city council next month, and then we'll rely that, we will, I will relay back to the planning commission what we come up with, um, or what, how they provide directions, so. Yeah, this project is categorically exempt, Class One existing facilities under SEQA, and I recommend that the planning commission approve it with the listed conditions of approval that are in the staff report. Did everyone see the letter that was submitted?
Yeah.
From a neighbor?
Yeah, there were, there was an email and a letter, yeah.
Yes, sorry, there was two.
Yeah, I just, uh, I just had a question. There is no short-term rental ordinance?
No.
No, so we-
So-
We use that, we, we permit them through the conditional use permit process and treat them as an Airbnb. Or, I'm sorry, uh, bread and bed and breakfast.
And that's why it requires off-street parking, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, did the city council indicate that they wanted to have a short-term rental ordinance? I mean, when it, I was around when they did it the first time, and for some reason it was just timeout, we're not going there, we're not gonna, is that your, your recollection?
It was kind of a split decision, like, split on the city council with a couple thinking maybe there was, you know, we need to do more about this, and then the other half not seeing it as an issue at this time.
And my understanding is last time, they, they spent almost a year working on a detailed ordinance, and they didn't want to just jump back into that again. So, when we come back next month, we're gonna show them what some other cities are doing and give them some ideas.
Cause I, I think we really need to have an ordinance for this. I mean, that's just my thought.
Yeah, I don't think the council felt that way.
What's that?
I don't think the council felt that way, like, again, um, they seemed okay with the status quo, but they didn't want us to keep an eye on it.
Gotcha. All right. Uh, any, any comments from the public?
The microphone up there.
Do you have an additional copy of that for us for the record?
Yeah, there's, there's actually data there. There should not be enough there. So, members of the Sutter Creek Planning Commission, my name is Quentin Taylor, and I share the property line with 23 Main Street directly to the south of the property. And we respectfully request that you deny this application for a short-term rental on historic Main Street. Our concern, which we share with many of the neighbors, is not only how this decision may impact us individually, but how it will affect the character, stability, and long-term vitality of our community. Main Street is the face of Sutter Creek. Homeowners here have invested substantial time, money, and effort into preserving and restoring these historic properties, maintaining a sense of pride and tradition that benefits the entire town. This dedication is reflected in well-kept homes, community holiday decorations, and the trust shared among all of its neighbors. We developed a close relationship with the previous tenors, tenants on the property next door. We watched over one another's homes because their yards are connected without fences. These houses were built in a time when neighbors relied on trust and relationships rather than barriers. Allowing a short-term rental, uh, has the potential of undermining that shared vispity by shifting, um, the street from a stable, resident-based community into a transient environment. Such a chain risks weakening these bonds of trust and mutual care that make this historic street, and by extension, our town so special. When we purchased the most neglected, ugly house on Main Street, we saw it as an investment not only in property, but in Sutter Creek community itself. We understood that, uh, the unspoken assignment to restore the home to its former beauty and to contribute to the preserving of the charming character of historic Main Street. Research in other communities shows that short-term rentals often contribute to the erosion of neighborhood character. Transient occupancy diminishes community pride, participation in traditions, and neighborly trust. Reduced housing availa- availability. Each home converted into a short-term rental is one less long-term option for families or workers seeking housing in Sutter Creek. Potential property devaluation. Homes adjacent, as in mine, to short-term rentals are often harder to sell to families, leading to a ripple effect that, across entire neighborhoods. Public safety concerns. Frequent turnover of unfamiliar guests creates a challenge for neighbors, particularly on streets where homes share yards, driveways, or close property lines, such as we do. In addition, approving this request could unintentionally disadvantage existing local businesses, such as hotels, inns, and bed-and-breakfast establishments, which have long-served visitors while operating under established regulations and oversight. It would be prudent for the commission to gather occupancy data from those businesses, determining if additional short-term rentals meet a genuine community need. What Sutter Creek truly needs is more long-term rental housing. Families, workers, and retirees continue to struggle to find available housing in town. Converting residential homes into short-term rentals reduces this already scarce supply, making it even harder for people with long-term ties to remain part of our community. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the planning commission to prioritize the long-term health, stability, and character of Sutter Creek over the short-term profits of a single-property owner. Protecting our historic Main Street, supporting housing availability, and preserving community integrity benefits all residents, not those, not just those who live adjacent to this property. And I want to thank you for your consideration and for your ongoing commitment to serving the best interests of this community. Sincerely, Quentin and Terry Taylor. Thank you. Do you need another copy of this?
Oh, no, we're good, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for your comments, anybody else?
Hi, my name is Lisa Ronback. I am the owner of the house that's directly behind the property, so we share backyards. And I have a lot of Quentin's concerns. Uh, I have an additional concern is that I'm a surgeon and I am on call fourteen nights, and if I have a place that becomes a party palace that keeps me up at night, it's gonna be really difficult for me to keep doing my job, so. That is, you know, noise, noise considerations are very important to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any other comments?
Byron Dammiany, um, I have similar concerns, have already been shared on that. And again, I think the way the council needs to look, the commission needs to look at this is, these are functionally bed and breakfasts. Uh, your staff report refers to them that way, and I think the question is, if this was a vacant lot, and someone wanted to develop it, would you put a bed and breakfast there in the middle of a residential historic district? The findings on the report say that this is, you know, consistent with the R1 designation, single-family residences, but it's really not. This is a commercial enterprise. This is not a single-family home any longer. This is not someone that's in an R1 area and using it the way all the other homes in R1 are being used. It's a commercial enterprise. And it's a commercial enterprise in a historic district that's a residential area, and I just don't think that's a compatible use, and I'd ask the commission to deny the application.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Michael Mason, we're in the house, like Lisa said, right behind the 23 Main Street. I, I had just wanted to echo everything that Terry and Quentin said, I thought it was very well put. And I guess my question was, seems to be there's been a sort of a, an ongoing concern or question about this issue, but it wasn't clear to me in the introduction, sort of what that was, other than at the end, it got categorized as a bed and breakfast, which, um, it clearly isn't. So, it doesn't really sort of make sense to me. I just have a question to everyone is, what was the ongoing concern that you needed to keep an eye on it? As you said, and, and how does that affect the decisions going forward?
So, it was, I think, probably five or six years ago, the, the city council went, as short-term rentals were starting to become more popular, other cities were doing ordinances on them, and this, the city of Sutter Creek was seeing more applications. That's when the council said, does, it didn't feel like a problem then, let's check back in at twenty units and see what the impacts are, and if there are any, but that's, does that answer your question?
Yeah, so it seems that there was a, a concern about this for the last five years. It's something that you needed to monitor?
The concern, as in they, they see these as a negative? Just some, just something to monitor? So, is there, are they having a positive or negative impact on the community?
I see, okay.
And we've been floating kind of close that line for quite a few years.
Yeah.
We don't get many, or we do, and then they fall off, or they sell. Then, when you sell a property, it doesn't transfer? Or, there's some on the list I know that are long-term renters, but they have the option to rent short-term. So, we're, we're trying to bind down that list, is the hard thing.
Right.
We don't know if it's truly twenty-one. We're, we're trying to focus on it. And there's some that are probably on there that we haven't caught. So, it's tough.
Got it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the, uh, is there any other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Court.
You have to say it in Spanish, though.
Say it, Court.
You have to say it in Spanish.
No. I'll get arrested, ICE will come in, here's some masked men and beat me over the head.
Oh, that's right.
Um, so, anyway, now I lost my train of thought, Tommy. But at any rate, so does this, I, with one of the curiosities is, does this have any effect on the TOT?
Yes, so they, anyone who rents their properties as short-term rental has to pay TOT to the city.
And it's, it would be comparable to what's paid in hotels?
Yes, it's the same.
And then, um, it, how about the, all that, the, um, what, I can't remember the phrase, but the fact that you have to have a housing plan? So, when you put something in, it, you know, change the usage from a single-family home to, uh, does that have any effect on the housing plan?
This does not have an impact on our housing element.
That's what I'm looking for, that's the phrase.
Single-family home, so this person could get their permit for conditional use permit and turn around and rent it to a long-term tenant, move into it themselves, um, so.
And then the last thing I had to say with, or, um, I guess it's, is a statement or, oh yeah, a statement for sure. Since this, the council seems to be, uh, concerned, cause you're having a presentation next month, or next week, shortly you're having a presentation, and of course, the council has the final say. Probably if, it makes sense to postpone it, to me, that you should wait till the council weighs in. And, uh, you know, if they're, if the city council, cause if you denied it on appeal, they could, they could okay it. And, or if you, you know, if you okay it on, on appeal, so, I don't know if they can, yeah, they probably could deny it on appeal. But since they want to talk about it in a month, maybe you should just put it, you know, push it aside and postpone the, the final decision. That's my suggestion, but, uh.
Thanks, Court.
Court, that's it.
Any, anybody else, any other comments? If not, I'll close, oh, go ahead.
Is the time.
Hi, I'm Desiree Lundgren. Um, I'm actually the person that's in charge of the whole project over at 23 Main. And, um, I hear everyone's concerns, absolutely. But primarily, keeping this house in the best shape it could possibly stay in is the whole reason why we're doing it. We have already done, I've already put a huge amount of money, just in the small time, I've been in charge of it, just trying to make it the best possible version of itself. I fell in love with this house, never been inside this house, and I loved it. And the only reason why I even realized that it was, something was different is that the lawn was starting to go bad in the front, and I immediately went to my husband's grandmother and said, you know, what's going on? You know, I, every time I look over at 23 Main, it's beautiful, it's like the lawn's great, blah, blah. And so, not on how I found out, the, uh, renter had moved out. Now, that's when I made the decision to talk to my husband and his grandmother in regards to this, primarily because we don't want to sell it. We want to keep it in the family. We want to be able to utilize this for our own family events as well as a short-term rental, like for Thanksgiving. We want to have this house ready by Thanksgiving, so we can have our Thanksgiving, all of our family there. As Eric's grandfather passed away recently, and we don't go out to the ranch anymore, so this was an opportunity to be able to have a nice place that I have renovated to be able to do so. Long-term, we don't want long-term renters in it because for that fact, one of many, but that fact alone is that we can't utilize it at our discretion for family get-togethers. In regards to, uh, again, just, um, the noise effects, I don't know how many people in this room have actually used Airbnbs, but I've been using, my husband and I have been using them for ten years. We went all over Europe utilizing them, and we wouldn't have been able to do so if Airbnbs weren't accessible to us and affordable. Also, they're very, very strict in the rules in which you can utilize them. You can't have parties, you can't have loud noises after 10:00 PM, or whatever, whatever we say it to be, it is not allowed. And we want to keep it a family place where people can come here and spend not a day or two days, but a week minimal. We want to put a, um, a minimal stay on it, so for people that just are gonna come through town and out, we don't want that. We want families to be able to come here and utilize the area, spend money in our town. I used to, I used to own Heart My Fur Baby right downtown Sutter Creek, which, um, during COVID, unfortunately, that happened, but a lot of my business was not locals, it was from tourists that came from out of the area. And if it wasn't for them, I would have never survived. And that's the first thing I thought of, is that this will bring more families to this area, not just parties, just not, we're not gonna allow parties there. We're not gonna allow, allow bachelorette parties and bachelor parties and any kind of parties like that. This is going to be a family place. Um, I'm trying to renovate the backyard to as beautiful as I can possibly can for it to be a private park for families. I want to be able to have families come here, and also, I have had friends and family come to this area, and there isn't enough places for people to be able to stay. And every time that, like, even on short-term, it's like, everything's always booked. So, I really feel like there is an area for some more short-term rentals on certain levels. Yeah, so, we're just, we're looking at keeping this in the family, we do not want to, we do not want to sell it. And this is a way for us to be able to take the money, put it in the house, so it can stay as beautiful as it is, plus, and be able to afford to do that. I know that for a fact, that you can't rent that house for what we have, what it's worth, what some people are paying for it, like, half of the house, and what the money we're putting into it right now to renovate it. That'd be ridiculous, to even try to even pay that a month. So, uh, short-term is the way to go for us to be able to keep it, to actually be able to actually put back the money, hopefully some money that we've already put into it to keep it going. And, um, yeah, we're not looking to, for it to be a hindrance or a nuisance whatsoever. I remember, um, you know, Quentin was nice enough to, uh, share his, um, landscaper, as well as his phone number, if I needed, if we ever needed to communicate with one another. Um, I just asked him the other day if the lights were too bright that we, that I just put in the back for, um, to have ambiance on the trees. I didn't hear back from him, but, um, so it wasn't a nuisance, especially because I know you guys live right up there. And I know that, again, with the nu, with the noise, I know that, um, it's not, not the goal that we're trying to make. We're trying to make it a family place, so, that is it.
Thank you.
You.
Any, anybody else? If not, I'll close the public hearing portion, um. No, that's another, that's another item, another item, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
I have definite, I have some definite-
Turn on your mic.
Or?
Nope, yep.
Is it on?
Yep, when the green light-
By definite issues, um, with this proposal, and they might not necessarily all be in the right order, but one of the things we did say, and I did bring up, um, I'm not sure if it was the June meeting, was, well, we hit the twenty. Cause I'm a newer member, and I always heard, well, when we hit the twenty, that was supposed to be it. But then it was later, no, that's when we're supposed to review it. Well, we've hit the twenty, so we definitely can come up for review. And I didn't understand the thing about the ordinance, but if we bring this forward to the council, I've brought up issues with other members, being a new member, trying to understand, why don't we change certain things if we don't see how they work or whatever? And it just seems the power and authority to do this is with our city council. So, if it comes up as an ordinance, or however it needs, you know, as the premise, we've hit the ten, twenty, we need to review it, I think the sheer number fact that they talked about before is one of the issues brought to the table. I think the other thing is, um, my specific concern is, um, when you look at, and I know this is a boilerplate that we've used for the other properties that we've considered, but I think this is a unique property, and therefore, it's something to be considered, in how we evaluate whether we provide these use permits. So, some of the concerns have already been mirrored here, but one of the specific, um, issues I have is that we say here that, um, and, and I'm looking at page fourteen or one of four of the resolution, that, uh, number three as an example, uh, that the proposed use will not impair the integrity and characting, character of the zoning district because of its consistence, see, with activities within R1, one-family dwelling. Well, I could clearly make an argument that you could have three families in there, so that's a multi-unit. And addition to the fact that earlier brought up, uh, it, when, that reflects back to what's in the planner's report, that this by all, uh, means, purposes could be considered a B and B. Well, I consider that a commercial property. So, I know that this town, since I've lived here since, uh, two thousand and three, it's been very strict about the, maintaining the integrity of the historical district. It gets a little frustrating, cause we probably have the oldest home in Sutter Creek, and it was one of the most expensive homes for many, many years. And there's things that we're told, you can, certain paint colors, or if you want to change, uh, any of your things that change the character of the home, which is historical nature, just these different things that we have to abide by, both in the commercial district and the residential district, if you're in within Sutter Creek. I don't think that this is consistent- I don't think that this is consistent. I agree that we have been nominated or have been selected as example, the gem of one of the most beautiful small towns, even in the United States. Let alone California, and this has happened repeatedly. Because you come in downtown, you make that turn, and whoa, this looks like the wild, wild west. Nobody knows our county, all our towns are historically preserved. And then the magic of going up Main Street to see these beautiful homes. And I agree with the tailor, Quentin, yep. And there, I've seen them restore a house down the street from where we live. And they took over this property and they've probably made it better than it ever was. And I look at that house in awe and wonder because they've put hundreds of thousands of dollars into this house. Another home, another home sold for almost 1.2 million on Main Street there, literally within 24 hours. The house on the other side, because the property we're talking about is you have the tailors on one side that they've totally restored, even nicer than some of the other properties. If you just really gave it the eyeball test. And the other house, it sold nearly a million dollars twice within a short period of time. Because other gentlemen had to move for health reasons. So that attests to the fact of the value of these homes and even more worth than some of the buildings in downtown Sutter Creek aren't, don't even command over a million dollar in value. So I think the one way we need to look at this is the commercial, you know, the residential area has a value. And it's based on the historic factors. I don't agree that this is consistent with the property is essential or desirable to the public convenience. Because it's an important tourist service to the community. I don't think that's a completely true statement to turn a beautiful, single family home on Main Street into, that's an issue. And then I think maybe when they developed the general plan, they never thought of people getting into this B and B, Airbnb craze and short term rental craze because it's a way to make money. And I do sympathize with the people that want to own and keep their house. But it's kind of like you can't have your cake and eat it too, because we faced the same thing with our home when we went through the Great Recession. Can we keep our home because of the finances and the cost it's costing our business? So it's nice, but then rent a hotel room when you come to town. I don't know, I guess it's, it's kind of, I understand that argument, but then I think we have to think about. And detrimental to public health and safety, you don't know the kind of people you have in there. We have Airbnb people coming down the street, right onto Main Street. They're going like 45 miles an hour and there's always people walking in the middle of the street, including myself. It's very, it's a very walked neighborhood. So people from out of town, you don't know who they are. People that visit, they drink more, they do other types of activities that you wouldn't do if you weren't on vacation as a transient person, as if you have to be worried about your neighbor. So I think that overall, if we were going to talk to the city council, I would bring up the issues of item one through five. And specifically three, it's not consistent. It doesn't comport with R1. It should be like, okay, maybe we put this on the board that you have to go to R3 for commercial, I don't know if that R3 is commercial, but commercial zoning. And then you go for conditional permit, like you have to with other commercial built properties in town. You have a two step process. Is this is the right use for that property? But first it has to have the right zoning for that. So there are other things I want to say, but I think that I better let my other members say something. You can see, plus, I want, I have to say, 40 years ago, I drove through Sutter Creek and this brick house, I says, I'm going to live there one day. And when we bought our house, that house wasn't for sale. And you had to wait for somebody to pass away to buy a house in downtown Sutter Creek. Because the word was on the street because people wanted to live here. And the noise, the nature of the community, people walk it, people are walking around our house when I'm working in the yard all the time. And I know they're looky-loos to see, do we want to live in this community? They're not, why are they driving so slow and they're making circles around? So it is an important thing. And I do think we should consider the fact that this is part of the strip of going up Main Street when we make these kinds of decisions. And I think this also, I really think we need to bring up, I don't know how we do it, I'm not an expert in those things. But bring up a more well rounded document of issues that we would like to be brought up as far as this whole short term B and B type of issue for the historic district of Sutter Creek.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a comment or two. First one's directed the city manager. Do we actually have a city council meeting? Because there's nothing online confirming minutes to show that it's on the agenda in the next month or two? Or is that just a, we would like something to happen wishlist?
No, and again, we should be clear, the council did not say stop at 20, they said continue.
Yeah, I just want to clarify.
Insurance.
But.
And they're not evaluating specific projects, it's going to be the start.
I know, as Court said, it's pointless holding it off a month because there isn't a meeting and.
We do agenda planning, you know, a month or two out. We're definitely planning a initial session on short term rentals.
Okay.
It's going to be looking at other cities and then depending on what they say, we may or may not start to work on an ordinance.
But this isn't a decision that's going to happen in the next two months, just to be clear for everyone.
And then a second will be the first meeting in October.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. All right. I have a few comments, I'm going to keep it to the ordinances because I feel our job as commissioners is to obviously hear what the public has to say. But match it to what existing ordinances we do have as the best of our abilities. I have looked at this, I hear your frustrations. I also know that there is some balance that needs to be kept with having Airbnb and short term housing. That being said, you know, we do have five hotels in Sutter Creek. We do have already 20 permitted places. This is the biggest show we've had for opposition for a short term rental. And, you know, I think it clearly shows in the findings that doesn't meet that the proposed use is essential or desirable for the community from what we've heard. I also find that in the code 18.6.020, permitted use of R1 housing. It does not list any such occupations of Airbnb's or bed and breakfasts. It actually lists daycare and homes, horticultural activities for personal use. Employee housing for six or fewer individuals, which, you know, you could stretch an argument that this house could be limited to six or fewer individuals staying. But there is actually no, nothing on there for permanent use for short term. So I just wanted to, do you guys have a comment or?
Yeah.
All ladies guys?
I do have one, I wanted clarification because it says six plus four. Four, four what as far as daytime residents? So that daytime goes to 10 o'clock at night. So how many people can actually be in the house, whether they're spending the night or occupying it for whatever purpose? And then you can have children if they stay in the room under four with, in each individual bedroom. It doesn't even say how many children in each room, so.
There's no ordinances that exist for this, so this is why it's so contentious. They're saying that.
There's really, there's no, the only requirement is the number of parking based on bedrooms.
Again, that's kind of consistent with state law, the state doesn't regulate what a family is long term. You could have seven adults living in a house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's number eight on the report because it says not to exceed two persons per bedroom plus four as far as the guests. Is that on top of the people residing? I guess they are. But is that four, okay. So that's 10 people.
10, 10 additional daytime guests could come over.
Additional, so that's 16 altogether.
Yeah, but they can't sleep.
That are in the house.
Yeah, during the daytime hours. And Lucy, I just wanted to add, so there is chapter 18.60, which is conditional use permits. And these are uses permitted in any zone and bed and breakfast are one of them.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So the ordinances, there's a lot of them, so it's hard finding them.
A conditional use permit would kind of put this, because this doesn't fall within the R1, so this would get it, so it could be used. If you want to weigh in.
Sure. Well, I kind of weighed in a little bit, I think we need an ordinance. And, and I know that's the city council's purview, but I think, I think the public needs to, when they do have a public meeting, needs to show up and have their concerns met. Some of the things, you know, I think you might have been on the, I was on the planning commission from the very first one, I think. Although I think there's, there's been some in town prior to issuing special use permits. I think that was Sally Newtson, I think's been in the business for a pretty long time on Badger Street. But a lot of things that came up early on in the discussions was, can you have 10 right next to one another on a street? I think the, my biggest concern is how it changes the character of your community. Even if you have a renter there, they're your neighbors and you have a relationship with them and they look out for you and you, well, you were my neighbor for a while, I think, on Badger Street, right? Yeah, so when you have that relationship, it doesn't matter if it's, it's a renter or owner, you still have a relationship. When you have people coming and going, and I've used Airbnb's, I'm not saying they're a terrible thing. And, and I think the reason why the council has not been reluctant to do much about it is because we really haven't, it hasn't been complaint driven. I think we have enough conditions of approval on these things to eliminate a lot of conflicts. We had some early on that weren't even permitted, that there were some conflicts and partying. But the, the, the ability to provide a diverse housing inventory is another concern. You know, do we have enough rentals? We probably don't. Are we competing with Airbnb's? I think a concern I have is you have a R1 lot and you're, you're right, you can do things with a special use permit. But if we're getting enough of these, the ordinance would, 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 I guess, ferret out some of these concerns the public have. How many do we need? And we're not the only community struggling with this. And I, and I don't know what the politics were, why the ordinance was never codified. I think some of it had to do with you make more money on TOT than you do property tax. I don't know if you're aware of it, but a $750,000 home in Sutter Creek, $280 comes to the city in property tax to provide services for that home. If you have a TOT from an Airbnb, it could generate thousands of dollars for the city. So I don't know about thousands, but it could generate quite a bit more money than the property tax. So now you're getting both, you're getting property tax and you're getting TOT. So every community is kind of struggling with this and, and I don't know what the right answer is. I, I live on Badger Street, I think there's, there's probably, there's a number of long term rentals on Badger Street. And there's a number of short term rentals on Badger Street too, so. I think my concern is I think we need to punt on this, get clear direction from the city council on what they want. They're telling us 20 and now we're getting the public concerned about it, well, when's 20? We reach 20, when, when, when are we enough? Let the public come and, and, and express their concerns to the city council in, in the creation of the ordinance to put some constraints on it.
I really want to be clear here, we met with the council, they know we hit 20, they did not want to stop. There wasn't.
Right, I, I got that, Tom.
Yes, okay.
And, and we have the opportunity to deny this too, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Sure, but I'm just saying the council is not expecting you guys to never approve a short term rental, right? That's not the expectation.
I know, but if we start denying them, we'll get their attention and they will maybe visit this again, so.
Well, we are, we are visiting, I just want to be clear that you understand, we are visiting and it's going to be a long process, I suspect. Like I said last time, I think they looked at a detailed ordinance for about a year.
Yeah.
So this could be many, many, could be quite a while.
And you, you don't know what, why, why they didn't pursue the ordinance.
I think they got very complicated, probably hard to enforce, and there were a lot of different things.
I think, no, I think it was more to it than that, so.
So I guess.
Anyway, so I'll let Tom.
I'd probably wrap it up because I think we were kind of over talking about this. I'd move that we deny this application due to the finding of number one, that is not, the proposed use of the property is not essential or desirable to the public convenience.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Conditional use permit, short term rental on 30 Bryson Drive. You're in?
Yes, thank you. The second application tonight is for a conditional use permit at 30 Bryson Drive for a short term rental. The applicant is proposing to rent out their three bedroom, two bath house. And use their garage and driveway for their required parking. This unit or this house is in the R3 zoning district. Again, with a conditional use permit, Airbnb, what do we call that? The bed and breakfast can be allowed in any zoning district with the conditional use permit. Again, the conditions of approval are the same standard conditions of approval that we apply to all. And I did have someone reach out to at, talk to me about this. One, and their concern was the parking. And it made it clear to them that the applicant needs to maintain those three off street parking spots, which is the garage and the driveway. Any questions?
Any public comments?
I'm the speaker, so none of us are.
Keep it to the point, you'll be fine.
My name is Robert and I live at Sutter Terraces, the mobile home community. This house was a vacant lot when we moved in in 2020. We were happy to see somebody buy it and she's done a lot of work on it and it looked like her nest. And then we get the letter that she wants to Airbnb it or something like that. She had, her car has never been in the garage because it's full. There is a parking space that she's created on her property with rock. But we're concerned about street parking, having a bunch of people coming down for weddings with that size of a house. And having little parking already because we have the nursing home, we have the adult facility, we have the doctors' offices. We already have people that come and drive through our neighborhood. We have kids who ride their bikes through and they're resigning everything. People walk their dogs through and let them do their business in there. And most of the, I'm the, we're the young residents. Most of the residents can't get out there and say, you know, can you pick up your dog boot? And so it's been a problem with people just wandering through with loud music on skateboards and all this other thing. So having additional people that we don't know what they're up to, or if they're going to come through and stroll through. Has got a lot of people nervous because we already get the police coming through a couple of times just to keep an eye on the area. But we've had problems with people throwing rocks in the pool. So we don't, we're assuming it's because they had to redo the pool. And, and it's having additional people from out of town come through and not know what they're up to. And with that size of a house, I can. And with that size of a house, I can see wedding parties coming in. And she's made it real, if you haven't seen it, it's on Bryson and, right off Bryson and yeah, Del Vista. And it's, it's, it looks like she nested there. And it's, I don't understand why she's renting it out, but that's just what our concerns are, is additional traffic, no parking. And having, our driveway was originally off forty-nine, old forty-nine, and now comes in through the other area. And the street that comes up to our house gets completely filled with cars at times. So parking is, we don't want them parking, we have parking spaces and we don't want those taken as well. So those are some of our concerns.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? If not, I'll close the public hearing portion of this.
Sorry, just mentioned there was a letter you received with regard to this one as well.
Oh, remember seeing that?
He sent it through, yes.
I sent it through as a PDF.
Oh, yeah. I did read it, I thought it was on the other one, thank you. Any comments?
No, oh, sorry.
Just let somebody else.
I was just going to say I'll keep it short and sweet because I know we're on time. But I think we're echoing the prior one, that we've received two complaints for this already, which again is more than we've received in any of the last year, basically.
We used to get a lot.
So, but showing up and voicing, especially not immediate, usually it's immediate neighbors. So I, I'm in agreement with the prior one that for, for this scenario and you know, being a bit further out of town, being where it's located, it doesn't meet the findings of point one. It's not desirable and it's not essential.
Yeah, I know I walk my son through that neighborhood, it's beautiful. I mean, it's great to walk, my friend Jim Chomcar can admit that my son does not go party and not need me picked up. So that is not, not a problem. But yeah, it's a beautiful house. I mean, it's, it's a nice little neighborhood, you don't, you don't want it to go down, so I concur.
So I motion to deny this.
Well, can I?
Sure.
None of those issues this time. I just, on the resolution, I didn't understand number two and three. One, it says it's a multi-family land use designation, which was different than the other applicant. But then it says it's consistent with R1's, a single-family dwelling. Like two and three, I didn't understand that inconsistency.
And that, I'm sorry, that was just, that's just an error.
Okay.
Actually, I don't think so, it is a single-family house.
But it is, the, the multifamily land use designation is from the general plan. And then their zoning is R3 multifamily dwelling. So that was just a, I missed that one.
And then the last issue or last point is, I know, I think it might have been the June meeting, is requiring applicants to have completed applications before we're, before it's put before the commissioners to be considered in the first place. Quite frankly, when you have something where people can't even just same of above, whatever, so scant, it makes me wonder what kind of a, you know, person would be overseeing the property.
And just to add on to that, we had, last week, we were working on the final draft of a new application cover sheet. And it's something that you can't just fill out at the front counter. You will take it, you will put all the information together and you will bring it back because we were getting things like.
Because I think the issue that the gentleman brought up, like describe how land is being used currently on adjacent properties, like around there. I mean, I didn't know there was a mobile home park, I didn't know there was a senior center or whatever that was you said. So, you know, so I think if the application was filled out, maybe you'd think, oh, man, they have a pro, issue with parking or, I don't know. It might trigger more of a robust analysis when we're looking at.
I know, I don't know the property, I'll just drive by it at a time before meeting.
But I mean, like that.
Oh, no, I, I know.
That's all I'm saying is, I think, you know, we wanted to see stuff a little more completed before it came to us to review.
And that was, we want to make sure people are really thinking through these business ventures before they come to City Hall and just scribble out an application and turn it into a, so that's why we've created a better application checklist for them.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So you're saying that we're going to see that in the future or that?
It'll be going up on the website tomorrow, the new app.
No, I meant in future applications, that's what you're working for.
More information, yeah.
Okay.
And additionally, they're going to submit their house rules.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just, during this meeting, emailed the group that's been working on the application with me. And I think we're going to add a line that says like, is this a part-time, short-term rental, a full-time or undecided? Because that could have an impact if it's, oh, you know, when we, we're going to rent it out when we travel only, or no, it's going to be a full-time thing and we hope to get as many people in and out as we can. And I think that will help making decisions.
Yeah, that's true.
Good line.
If, if I could add, I mean, I can see, you know, your guys' thinking tonight, but I do want to share a couple of things. The county assessor came to the council meeting and shared that fifty percent of the homes in Sutter Creek are not primary residences. And that was pretty surprising, and it's true throughout the county. So right now with a little around twenty, we're about one and a half percent of our housing stock as short-term rental. Another thing to think about is, as the first owner said, just because they're interested in short-term rental doesn't mean it will become a long-term rental, right? So there are quite a few basically empty houses or secondary houses in the community right now.
Yeah, but it's also balancing the need. I, I'm bombarded with the amount of people saying there's not enough housing here and part of those.
But apparently there, there's half the houses aren't a primary residence.
Well.
Uh, the other things I wanted to point out was just, we haven't had any complaints since, I think Mike mentioned that we, one of the things we've really been watching for is noise or calls to the police, anything like that, hasn't been an issue. And I, I know you guys think about this, but I do think you have to think about property rights of the owner, kind of fairness and what we've approved in the past. And, and again, applying the ordinance, which allows conditional use permits.
And Tom, do you think fifty or a hundred are about the right number?
I don't know if there's a number, I do think we should come up with an ordinance, but like I said, I think it's probably going to take us a year.
Well, I think it might, I, I think it might come quicker with after tonight's.
Yes, but just denying, I mean, we're going to go to council in a month, we'll get clarity, it will come back to you on what to do in the meantime.
But what you're saying is basically to let, approve all of them because there's nothing, technically, there's no good argument either way. So what you're saying is to just let them all.
Well, but again, if they rented it, if they rented it long-term, they could have twenty people over the day for a party. They could, they could do all these other issues, right?
It's not that, it's not, how many times have I made the argument that a short-term rental could be to your advantage as a neighbor because the neighbor from hell's only there for a weekend?
Yeah.
But we also need.
But, but again, there are long-term rentals, I've got two across the street from me that are, they, there's some turnover, but they're very quiet and.
Yeah.
And the short-term rentals, I've never had any trouble with those either, so.
That's why we have, we have the long list of conditions of approval. So again, I don't, I just want to be sure we're actually solving a problem, right?
Well, I think there's a, something to be said about all of these, how many are owned. It's just like the buildings, the commercial buildings. We have a lot of people that their families have owned them, there's some families that own six or seven houses. They've inherited them when they paid ten thousand dollars for them or fifty thousand or a hundred thousand. It's a lot different thing than when you got somebody that paid a million dollars for their house or hundreds and hundreds of thousand and you move in the community. So is it a public disclosure when you buy a house that you're buying next door to a, a B and B?
I mean, you have to treat, I think you have to treat owners fairly, whether they bought it recently or they inherited it.
Oh, no, I, I know, but I think that's why you're seeing those kinds of numbers is because people are maintaining them as a nesting because they either inherited them or they've seen their fifty thousand dollar home go up to a million dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars. And it's like, I'm not selling that. So I think there's a, there could be an analysis of why there's so many in downtown Sutter Creek. It's the same thing with the businesses. How many are renting versus how many own the buildings? It's a different thing, there's some person owns a lot of the buildings, but they got them when they were like.
It, it really doesn't matter, it's, people can buy homes. They can have a second home, they don't have to occupy them. I don't, you know, I'm sure Jim Rooney looked at homeowners exemptions. They get, you get seventy bucks off your property tax if you file a homeowner's exemption. I've seen people that live in their homes and they've never filed a homeowner's exemption. So I don't know how accurate those statistics are. I think you'd have to dig a little deeper on that one, but, you know, you're right, people have property rights. But also the people next door have property rights too. And if it starts affecting the character of the neighborhood and we get a little too many of these, and I think the planning commission has been reasonable and the council's been reasonable, what is the sweet spot? When do we exceed that? I think the council needs to weigh in on that with some good public input and get to that and do it with an ordinance and not say every single-family residential is now can have a commercial use with a, with a use permit.
Well, I would say we do have an ordinance, which you guys are evaluating tonight, the CUP, but understand what you're saying.
Oh, the, the Airbnb ordinance is what you're saying?
A conditional use permit is, certain uses are allowed, there's a whole list, right?
That's a big one.
But it's up to you guys to decide if they're going to meet the terms of the conditional use permit.
Yep. But when you get so many of these, shouldn't you have an ordinance that talks about this use and not a blanket conditional use permit, I guess? I think an ordinance is more appropriate, but I thought it was in two thousand nineteen. But I think money was driving those decisions.
It's still only, it's less than two percent still, though.
Yeah. Anyway, uh, do we, did we have a motion?
Nope.
Do we have a motion? Okay.
And I was going to do it this time?
Yep. I will go back to what I said before, I make a motion. I know this is contentious and this is the first time I've actually motioned denied items. But based on public interest and near the location of the house, and I've been there, parking is tough. I've visited the counselor's office there and I've had to park in the street because it's so full. So I motion to deny it under the findings point one, that this is not essential. And it's not in, from what we've heard, the community's interest.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Uh, all in favor? Aye. Well, let's see, anything else on the agenda? Do we have anything else upcoming, Aaron?
Two items.
Thank you.
It's pretty.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion closed.
Uh, I'll close the public, I'll close the planning commission. Will adjourn.